October work session to order. We have one action item. The professional service agreement between Mount Angel School District and OTAC. We already see the copy of the contract. Does anybody have any questions about what is in the contract?
Just for the record, I want to state that there were two pages missing and what was submitted to all of you. So tonight, the last four pages may look a little bit different. The scope and fee was missing, and that is in there tonight. Important part.
I will make a motion to approve the independent contractors. To approve the personal professional services agreement between Mount Angel School District and OTAC.
Do you have a second? A second. Paul and David.
Hi.
You're very close. Alright, now for our presentation from Ms. Erica Burnin on the talented and gifted program.
You want a chair? No?
Also, it would feel really weird to just be like hanging in my.
Come through here, come to this table. Um, hi. It's actually really fun to be back. I don't know. Um, okay, I think copies of our plan, because I don't know about you guys. I'm like hard copy. Other generation people, whatever we're at now. However, if you do go, if you were on our district website, you would go into the department. And then under special services, when you go through the side of page right there. Um, you will see that there are a whole bunch of hyperlinks. It went a little crazy so that it wasn't like one and done. If you miss it the first time, it would be done. Every form is hyperlink everywhere. Um, and it does take you to, all of our forms are there and available for public viewing. So you can see them. I did not make a copy of every form for you, but I did bring a few of them. If you would like to see them, because everybody loves a good flow chart. I love the flow chart. I know Irene loves a good flow chart. So, um, thank you. You're very welcome. Uh, so that is there for you. And then I will, I'm gonna hold on to these videos because I know that if I pass them out, they'll do what you guys are doing, and they'll look at it and hand out, but not listen to me. But that's okay. You don't have to listen to and tell me to what I'm saying. I think you've actually heard most of this. So, right, you can prove. No, we're good. Okay. So this is the first of three professional learning sessions that we're doing with our teachers. The teachers have actually. Uh, Nick, Sowa, and I are working together. Uh, where we got these slides from, ODE actually put out a couple um, side shows. Uh, we chose to take them and combine them into one because I felt like there was a lot of redundancy and maybe didn't um, really translate into the classroom too much for teachers. Even some of the stuff that I was talking about with OARs, they were like, oh, what does that mean? So we tried to really say like, okay, what are the changes in OARs need for me in the classroom? So um, we're charging the big, so they understand the big, and then kind of working down to that, um, on that. First half day, we were up at JFK, but then the staff came to, which was really awesome, to have like the whole secondary together. So we started the half day there, and then they continued their day. And then at St. Mary's, they like had their day, and then finished with them. So it wasn't like too choppy. And so that was kind of how it went. Okay. So what we're gonna focus on today are the key revisions and any um, changes as far as what it means for us. Um, really talking about, um, so we're identified. Now what? What does that mean for services? Um, really, you're gonna hear me a lot talking about local context, local context, local context. Um, so it's gonna be a pretty annoying and redundant. We'll talk a little bit about missingness. Again, what are other districts doing? What have we done? Um, how does this fit with um, how we've been moving into the RTI framework? Um, and then getting into the OARs, which you might have a little bit more interest in than some of the people. Um, and then, like I said, we're doing two others. We will talk more about the nuts and bolts process of how to identify. We'll get into that more with the teachers. It isn't too different, but we'll make sure to touch on every form and what that might look like. Some asked a few questions about that. Um, really hitting on some of these more outlier areas. So we did talk a little bit about that back on the second. Um, so we talked a little bit about that. Um, they were good questions. And then the gifted profiles, which I am holding on to and will give. It's a little stinky. Um, those, uh, just due to the way that our calculus are probably going to be asynchronous, where we put stuff together. And if I'm super cool and can figure out how to do voiceover, I will do that. I'm not super cool, so maybe Reed can help me. Um, we'll put it together, but then I'll make sure to set up live like Q and A session. So if people really have time, they can still get their face-to-face, face-to-face questions answered. Alright. So, alright, so this is how we got here. Next slide. Um, again, these are ODE sites, but I maybe like added things. So the highlights are mine. Um, the, the big thing here is bullet number three, the local norms. Um, really focusing, I'm kind of starting here with local norms going up to really focusing on what does service look like for our students. Um, and again, focusing on that culturally relevant piece, which we've really talked about. Who are we missing? Who haven't we identified? Um, we'll talk, like I said, later about the gifted profile. Here's your sneak peek. We're like really good at this one. We're not very good at these others. So who have we been missing and how can we get better at it? Um, we've already been doing multiple modes of data and multiple methods of data gathering, so that's not new. Um, Mount Angel School District is really good at that. Next. This was me being really obvious. These things are now gone. We're not doing these things anymore. Um, so, um, for some students, it was like, hey, we're just gonna wait for their SBAQ score to come. And guess what? There's no more percentiles that um, ODE is giving for SBAQ. So that's gone. So we have to, you know, look at um, other measures for that. There used to be a criteria called potential to perform, um, and that really goes with some of these other, these last, the bullets three and four. With potential to perform, if, for example, I'm just gonna pick on you because you're a student, but we know each other, so it's cool, right? Alright, so let's say Reed has a disability, and we would say, well, Reed has a potential to perform despite his disability or, um, you know, his failure to achieve here is, you know, because of this. So they've really gotten, thank you for playing along. You're the student here. Not adding you on any of those sorts of things. We know you're doing fantastic in school. Um, so really, they've gotten rid of that whole category of potential to perform because with potential to perform, it was linked to deficit-based language. Um, and so by moving forward with local norms and looking at some of these qualitative measures, it just allows it to be more strength-based. That, okay, cool. Thank you for being our, our model for that. Okay, next. Um, I felt like by doing, um, moving forward with local norms and using multiple methods, it really aligned with special education process. Because in special ed, it isn't like one test and you're in. We're looking for that pattern of need, that pattern for specially designed instruction. And so, okay, it could be, yes, you have a disability, but do you also need specially designed instruction, right? What is the impact of that in the classroom? And so they're really aligning the process for tag similar to um, special education. So it could be, yes, we're seeing this data, but what does that pattern, what is a pattern of need? And how does that align with service in the classroom? So um, ODE is now saying that there needs to be a pattern of need, and you need something instructionally different, which is very, you know, almost identical to what the special education process looks like. Um, so we need to be able to match that with services. Okay, local context. Where I kind of flip flopped some slides since I knew you would be doing it. Um, so these next two slides are super fun, and if you wanna geek out, Mark, you'll love this. Um, not the Jerry geek. I'm, I'm the geek. Um, but if you really like numbers, if this hyperlink up here on the New York Times, you can, you can even find that angel, which is super fun, but I picked two extremes. So there is a lot, don't click one. Because I have these on my slide. But if you uh, were a stu-, I felt like this really illustrates local context. Um, it also shows this great correlation between a parent's um, socioeconomic status and achievement. So if you are a student in Detroit, Michigan, where the median family income is twenty-seven thousand dollars, the average student is performing two-point-three grade levels below, again, on average. So if you are a student in Detroit, and you are performing at grade level, you probably need something instructionally different. Right? Because you're already about two and a half grade levels above the average student. So you might be a tag student in Detroit. Okay, next slide. But in the suburb of Boston, where the median family income is a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, the average student is almost four grade levels above. So if you were performing at grade level in Lexington, Massachusetts, you're behind if you're at grade level, right? And if you're four grade levels above, you're not tag. You're with everybody else. You're with your peers. So this is why local context really matters. Um, does that make sense? Okay. By the way, um, the median household income here was, I think, it was around sixty-five, give or take two. It was like sixty-three or sixty-seven. And we were at like point-three grade levels below. So right about um, average. We were like an average district. Which is kind of great for using percentiles. Okay, thank you. Um, so I think the hope here is, again, that we certainly can use um, state or national norms, but it's definitely matters, like where your district is performing. So Mount Angel School District is very different than a Westland or a Lake Oswego, right? Um, and so using some of those um, really matters, which of course begs the question of like, okay, so I'm picking on them again because we're student representative. But if Reed has a tag plan here, and he does move to Lake Oswego, yeah, they're gonna evaluate that because it really comes down to service, right? What does service look like for Reed and Mount Angel? He might need something instructionally different. But if he goes to Westland-Wilsonville, where their math curriculum in general ed is already um, a step ahead, right? Well, he may not need a tag plan. He might just fit in there with their instructional practices. But his needs are getting met, and that's what matters. Um, okay, so we've really talked about receiving services focused on our underrepresented populations. Um, removing the assessment scores, those cutoff scores. Um, the social emotional implications, we've added that to our updated tag plan. Um, if asynchronous development is noted, a lot of times our students who are academically gifted um, or academically talented have some asynchronous development in their social emotional um, areas. Um, I can certainly speak to some of the students that I've worked with, or even within my own family. It's like they're, you know, they're super smart, and they might have some really, some interests that are like, wow, I know nothing about that. But then interacting with their peers can be, you know, really difficult. So how are we gonna support that? So we've added comments here, um, that at the bottom, that if that is noticed, how are we gonna support that? Okay. Do you have any questions? Yeah, you're gonna bank them for later. Mark's taking them.
Do you foresee potentially, right, so if a, if a student moves in from um, a district that is lower, like, let's say, like Detroit, and they identify it on tag once it's up to local control, and they move here, and you might tell the parents, well, actually, they're all over tag. How do you think the parents are gonna, A, take that, and B, how are they gonna be informed about like, hey, if you move districts?
I know, that's gonna be hard. It's funny, I asked that question. So last year, when I was attending the different, they had Zoom, like, calls, right, for all of this stuff as we were going, and I asked about like transferability. And first, are we recording this and posting this? Okay, so I'll be super professional. I asked about this and was made aware, I guess, that uh, tag transferability has never been a thing. And I was very surprised by that comment.
Well, because I foresee it also going the other way. If a kid is identified tag here and then moves to another district who is like Lexington, them getting really upset, coming back at, at us for not identifying their kid. But so, you know, as.
I was under the impression that because in Oregon, we all use the same criteria that tag transferred from district to district to district. And I was told that that was never a thing, and that I was mistaken.
But that's not to say that, and that's not to say that when a family knows their child is tag in Mount Angel, and they move districts, they're gonna, depending on the family, they're gonna bring that up and say, so it's not required that it is transferable and it's identified and brought up by families to make it, no, I mean, that's so it's.
And I did, one, yeah, and one of the new things was adding like a tag parent rights. And so that was added to, I, I made sure, because I wanted to make sure that parents, like, how would a teacher necessarily know, like, oh, this is an OAR? So I added that to the tag plan down here to make sure that says, I have noted the parents of their rights in accordance with this OAR. And then in the drive that teachers have access to, I have, I typed it up in like plain language that parents would understand. And it's also linked to the actual OAR. So they'll get both. So, I mean, trying to provide some level of, of procedural safeguards. I mean, I think they're.
Explaining and establishing, establishing some expectation.
Um, I mean, although it's all confusing, right? Yeah. Trying. Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of processes that are confusing to us educators, let alone like, hi, parent, here's seven pages to sign. I, I think we're moving in the right direction, given how many procedural safeguards are in place for, you know, parents of students who experience disability. Um, but I think we still have a ways to go in tag and in OAR. Okay, um, again, I highlighted, but I think the vickership for us is going to be looking at local norms, which um, when I, when we met with teachers, they seemed to be like okay with. They're like, yeah, I know who my kids are. I'm doing um, curriculum-based assessments. Um, I know who those kids are. We just need to know like what the process is. Um, looking at the bottom, uh, they're already doing portfolios of evidence. Um, we already have been doing teacher input. We already had checklists for that. We added more um, qualitative checklist, especially for students who are culturally, linguistically, or economically diverse. So we have specific ones for that. I think we have like seven now. Um, I'm kind of going out of order at the very top. Um, a few of us, uh, Nick, Emily, our school psychologist, and I met in the spring with Jocelyn, who's the principal at St. Mary's at the time, to really look at what our universal screener data had been showing over time. So we looked at that. Um, we are gonna add the universal screener at sixth grade this year, too. So we'll be doing that second and then sixth. So we'll, you know, just see what that data yields. So I feel like moving into the shift, we were already in good shape for that. Next. Um, again, so, and that, that's the nagly area. That's our universal screener that we do at second grade, and we'll be adding at um, sixth. Um, for those of you who aren't familiar, it's a computer-based assessment. It's non-verbal. It's culturally neutral. Um, it's really a bunch of puzzles that they have to solve. Um, it's really hard. I don't know, I've, I've, uh, if they take it in a group, but I'm always like, gosh, I don't know which puzzle might go there, because they get progressively harder. Um, and, yeah, those kids are pretty incredible, um, the ones who like persist and look at it. Um, it's done in thirty minutes. So I'll be interested to see how that goes. OAS is in our Oregon statewide assessment system, which is like the name for all of the statewide um, assessments. So that's SBAQ, but I think as parents, as community members, you know that as. Um, these over here. The Woodcock Johnson is the standardized achievement test. The WISK is a standardized um, IQ test, which if we believe we um, either need additional um, academic data or an IQ test, um, our school psychologist would administer that. We've already talked about the other pieces. Any question about like additional assessments? You're like, Erica, finish up. Good. Okay. Um, this is not our triangle. I know you've seen our triangle a million times, but this is the one. Um, the ODE already had completed for tag, so I stole it. Um, but it's really, um, as you can see, we talked about, okay, about eighty percent of students are already getting this classroom differentiation, and our tag students would continue to like filter up, right? Um, so then it's like, oh, this kid quickly needs more challenge, and they would move up into strategic or what we call tier two. Um, and they're getting, you know, pulled together for, let us say, you know, a cluster group with, you know, a higher, Teresa knows, right, like a higher, higher level reading group. And then it's like, they still need something at either a faster pace or a higher level. You know, who's kind of bubbling to the top there? That they need like an independent study to like really keep them higher, higher engaged. So that's where we're at right now, which uh, Rachel and I will talk about at the end. Okay. Okay, here's all the boring stuff that I love, and I know some of you love to. Um, the teachers are just like, just tell me what to do. We just wanna serve kids. So, um, the OARs, um, so the RS, um, which then, of course, the Oregon administrative rules. Um, the bolded parts were obviously like, here's what's really important. The black stuff is the stuff that are like the shells. This is what we have to do. This is what we will continue to do. So we are still have to and will continue to identify in general intellectual ability, um, which we usually say is IG, intellectually gifted, and then B, uh, academic ability. The blue is the stuff that, um, we've talked about in the spring, which is like, we may do and we want to do. We're still a little bit fuzzy about what does that pathway look like as far as methodology for assessment? And then how do we connect that to service, right? So awesome. We have found out that so-and-so is if we had a methodology for determining that Mark is an amazing leader, cool. What does a leadership tag plan look like for instructional services for Mark? So that's kind of like where we're at. The great thing is, is teachers are super eager to like figure this out. I've already met with uh, Luke Schroder, our band teacher. Uh, we met last week and we went through, um, we have an eligibility form, which is a preponderance of evidence tool, which is what we're shifting to for eligibility. And we went through that and figured out what would work, what would we add, what would be performance tasks? So we're already moving forward with what that would look like for bands. Um, and I've already talked about, okay, what does that look like for service? He feels like he can do it. Um, my concern is, oh, but you're just one person in a small district. How do we get a second raider in there? So we're already engaging in those conversations. Teachers were like, oh, what about this person linguistically? And what about, I mean, so they're already like excited and ready to engage in the conversation. So I'm like, I was just super vulnerable and be like, I don't know, help me out. Like, who wants to have a conversation? And they're totally willing. So so that's where we're at. Yeah, okay, next. The red is just stuff that I uh, emphasize because I felt like these are either important or a change, or like, hey, pay attention to. Um, the opportunity to learn in number one, I felt like is really relevant for our district because we have so many newcomers. So we might have a kid who is, you know, multiple grade levels behind, but they haven't had an opportunity to learn. And now all of a sudden, we give them this opportunity to learn, and their rate of learning is off the charts. And it's like, whoa, we need to pay attention to that, right? So we, we probably wouldn't compare this newcomer who has never been in school, hasn't been in the US. We're not gonna compare them to an English-only student who has only grown up in the United States. So that's kind of a tricky thing to pay attention to as well. Again, that kind of falls into that blue area of like, how do you identify gifted newcomer students? So we're looking at that. Um, rate and level aren't new. That was probably since maybe you guys were in school. We talk about rate. Um, how quickly, how accelerated does somebody need something level? Do they need something more advanced? Some students might need both. Some students might need one or the other. But really, the teacher is gonna be the best one to be able to identify what that looks like on the student's plan. Next. Oh, here we are. You have a, your flow chart, because everybody knows the flow chart. Um, but honestly, like, I'm here when people have questions. Nick's here when people have questions. I mean, how do you take a complicated process and make it um, as simple as possible? Um, and I'm sure we will revise it because once we get into the work, we'll be like, ooh, that didn't work. So we tried to take what it, what we thought it would look like in our minds and like put it on paper. We borrowed somebody else's and adjusted for like us, and we know that we will probably make a lot of mistakes, and then we will adjust. And we have a couple more slides about what's next. So we update our tag plans every year at fall conferences. Um, and as you guys know, because you approved the calendar, we have moved up to October, which I'm super excited about. I feel like I've been asking for those for like a long time, and I love that they're in October because you can actually be effective and do something instructionally to like change the course of a student's academic trajectory if we do them in October. And we have some pretty phenomenal school leaders who are now on board with um, doing either goal setting and student-led, or at least beginning the process with student-led conferences, which is just really cool if you are identified as a tag student, because you can take ownership for your own learning. Um, so as far as like how these two interplay, there is the tag plan that needs to get done. Um, but then there's also that overlay of goal setting and being a student and running your own conference. So, um, that will be done at all three schools. Um, I don't know that JFK is ready to bring in goal setting yet, but they're at least moving in the direction for student-led conferences. Um, but St. Mary's has goal setting going, and each teacher has their own goal setting sheet at, um, the appropriate developmental level, right? Like kindergarten obviously looks different than fifth grade. Uh, but they're ready to rock and roll. Um, do you wanna talk about, oops, Sarge?
I'm happy to. Um, the piece that we haven't gotten to yet in working with the cooperative with the school district is where Studer is going to take us outside of strategic planning. And uh, one of the great things that's going to happen beginning next year is that uh, we'll be implementing improvement science in the classrooms. And what that means is we'll have a plan-to-study act cycle in classrooms. Uh, and, and I guess what I'd like to say about that is every student deserves an opportunity to provide input back to their teacher on their effectiveness. deserves an opportunity to provide input back to their teacher on their effectiveness as a teacher. And being able to do that through Studer and P D S A cycles or plan to study act cycles is going to be really, really important because students are going to be able to set their own individual goal setting. Uh, uh, in many content areas, not just one and at all levels, K twelve, do it very effectively, be able to provide that feedback to the teachers. Uh, you need to either step it up, you need to slow it down, uh, and the teachers will need to respond to that. And so those are going to be really important pieces that comes to Studer.
I would just add on improvement science. Kathleen has, um, a lot of experience with improvement science. And, um, I'm actually going back to school if you haven't heard. I'm sure more about that later, which I'll need it on recording. Um, and my entire focus is through these improvement science, um, process. So it's super exciting to be working with, um, a company who is totally focused, um, on that work. And so, um, yeah, to bring that all the way down to a student level is really powerful. Uh, and last, but not least, um, some other areas. And probably you can take that one and I can do the other two.
Sure, absolutely. What we're finding in embracing R T I of work is that it takes practice to to be able to do level three well. First, you have to start with the foundation, have a healthy tier one core. And we're still finessing that one, but trying to practice tier two and start making those goals and actions for tier three. And that goes for extensions and it goes for interventions as well. So we need to continue to refine that. And we need to continue to dialogue about that, look at the data about that and give a compelling reason why we need to provide more extensions and interventions for students. Uh, and then with new students, excuse me, new leadership in the buildings, we have more opportunities to adjust the master schedules so that we can really include extensions and interventions during the school day, not before or after school. And we have three leaders in our buildings that really understand the importance of that and how to do it. They're going to get the job.
I hope we're not disappointed, but I'm super excited about this. That's fine. So in the fall, um, before winter break, we will rock off all of the professional development, which I've already talked about. Um, but in the spring then, uh, we'll, we'll really focus on student engagement. Um, and I will at least commit to doing the student interviews. Um, if I am really focused, we'll get, um, some family focus groups as well, um, which is really again, a part of that improvement science process and getting feedback. Um, which we call empathy interviews and then the focus groups as well, so that we can hear from people, how can we improve our services? Um, and then as a part of that, also at spring conferences, we'll make sure that we're doing a better job of uh, communicating out to families about tag, right? Like what is it? So that families also know then, oh, maybe my kid does fit this profile and they can advocate as well, um, at the schools. Um, so that, um, I can start working on a communication scan for families as well. So that will be the focus moving from January on out. Um, so these are the gifted profiles and um, so this comes from the research of, um, BUDS and, and I heart, um, and it's it's, I don't know, ten, fifteen years old, but it does, they keep producing new things. And while the titles might change, if you decide to go and do some of your own, uh, research, which I'm, I'm sure you've probably done. I think it'll sit and read next stuff on there. Um, so the, the, the titles may change, but they generally land in the same area. Um, the same areas. Um, I would say that in my experience here, um, we do a pretty good job. And I think that's the same for most school districts of identifying the successful learner. That's the usually the teacher's pet, the one who is like eager to learn, who is like studious and outgoing and involved in all the things, right? Like, we're really good at that. Um, but we're maybe not as good at some of the others. Um, and I think there's legitimate reasons as to why we're not as good at the others. Um, and I think it's the same thing why other school districts aren't as good at all the others. So um, I think it first starts with knowing that like, oh, like that might be a sign of, of giftedness. Like it might have some, some really um, naughty students who are engaging in some really difficult behaviors that, that right, yeah, because they're bored because their level of engagement is so high. And like, oh, that's really challenging. So, so how can we just be more informed? Like that's a good starting place. And then how do we build from there? And it's funny because, um, even just sharing this infographic with some people, they're like, oh my gosh, I've never thought of that. And I'm like, I know me too. So, so where do we go from there? And I've just been really, um, thankful for other people being willing to engage in the conversation. Um, and being willing, willing to learn alongside us. So um, so that's where between, um, learning and growing and changing, um, you know, some challenging some of our own beliefs. And then, um, I'm gonna provide any key one of them stuff. And then just, you know, coming together around like, what does this look like? Like, oh, I have this kid in mind. What does, what does that look like? Um, you know, we're going to be in a really, really good space and then moving into twenty twenty four, how do we engage with families? Right? And then how do we empower them? So that's where we're at. Now I feel like I need to turn to Mark because he's been taking copious notes.
I have a question. Can we go back to the conference slide, John? So it says that the plan will be going over, going over during fall conferences.
Yes.
So, so every plan, so there's both a conference with the student and do the plan in the same twenty minute timeframe that non-tag kids are doing. And I know that doesn't seem like a good planning of other districts allow for tag students to have twice as much conference time as those. That's not a practice that we have here.
Thank you for that feedback. Sounds like we should add that to our meeting tomorrow morning. Thank you.
I have a question on the school tag review team. When do they need or how do they need or do they need monthly? Do they?
Yes, but first, sorry, I'm going to write this down. So I sure don't forget. So the way that it is set up right now, um, is just like, um, any student who needs to go through S S T someone said, right? So S S T is scheduled every week and once the teacher has, um, data, then they move the student through S S T.
Uh huh. So it's So I have a student and I'm not sure they're tagged. Uh, you know, but I just, so I go through the S S T process and the S S T team says, oh, I think you're, I'm just, you know, I think your student may be tagged. You know, and so it goes to that next level. So then the tag team needs, which is separate from the S S T team?
Um,
or how does that work after that? I was just
Yeah, no, that's cool. Tag team like for us is going to be S S T and then what they might do if they aren't clear is call in then like Nick or me.
Okay, okay. Okay. So it's the same team. Okay. Thank you.
That's they're like, oh, got it. Because at S S T they might review like that. And then we're like, okay, now we're going to go into like the drive and be like, okay, complete these additional tag specific.
Sure. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
And the, the information tables, screen conferences, is that something that we um, as a district are going to do a better job of? Hey, family, if you think your child is
Yeah, see, we've never done that.
Can we, we can bring it up to your child's teacher and see kind of like what are they showing in the classroom? To push to possibly get tested or, you know, teachers are, I mean, they do a great job, but there's a lot in there.
I haven't figured everything out. I just know that we need to do something because we haven't done anything about communicating that this is a thing. And like here's, I like, for example, I have even just like the difference between bright and gifted, like, oh, are you staying more on the side of gifted versus bright? Like maybe you want to talk to your child's teacher about, you know what I'm saying? Like I can see having, you know, having things like that. And, um, between Nick and I, we can rotate between some of the schools to have somebody there.
I really, I appreciate you doing that because it, it gets me thinking about what we could do on a monthly basis as a district, maybe even in school newsletters. This would be fabulous to tear apart and everyone look at something different. Empowering parents to giving them that information so that they're not stuck in what used to be considered challenging and gifted. So
As the great information.
Thank you. We have our first, I just emailed you, but you were already in here, our first, um, with Rachel as we work on a communication plan at district office. Um, so like all the areas that Rachel and I oversee. Um, so I'll be working on that. Um, and I'm already, but like, I need this stuff from you. And I, you know, so that like, because the schools send out newsletters, but we never send out newsletters on like what we're doing. Um, we committed to quarterly to start because we didn't want to like over commit and then fail. Right. Um, but like, yeah, we can, so we'll be getting one out by the end of October on like, here's what health services does. This is what we've been doing in professional development. This is what's going on in tag. This is what's going on in special services so that we can at least share out some of the things to not only staff, but community members and, um, and parents, families. So we're, but I think that's when engaging with parents such as yourself to tell us like, this is, this hasn't been happening and this should be happening. Like what you just said, right?
If I had not worked in the school system, I would not have known to go and ask for my child to, right?
Yes, dude. Yep. Ready?
I worry the S S T process takes far too long. And how does a parent advocate for um, their, their child to be tested? Or and or a staff member. It's like, okay, let's do the S S T. The S S T has a three month list of students to burn through before they get tested.
Oh. It's a good point.
Especially come springtime when many students need an S S T.
Right.
For, you know, for the preceding poll.
Yes.
And so how do we make it equitable for those who need an S S T and things that maybe don't need to go through S S T?
So it's like a separate?
Well, I, I think, I, I think the idea is to run things through
S S T.
At the same funnel, but what I can, what I, I can, I would be concerned if funnel is going to go back up.
Right, yeah.
I understand the logic. That makes good sense, but, but maybe the funnel's not big enough.
On the other hand, also with that funnel, uh, how do they keep parents abreast of what's going on? Cause I made, I, I made that referral for my child, you know, months ago, and I'm still waiting or how do they, you know, kind of know that, well, we're still in the queue. We didn't forget about your kid. First, I want to thank you. This is extremely comprehensive and it's really well done.
Thank you.
It's very, very well done and it's a huge, huge step in the right direction. It's very, very well done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So Erica, is Nick going to be taking a larger role in that type of role?
Um, I mean, he's
The plan for
He's the teacher leader. Um, so I still oversee it. Cameron last year was the teacher leader. Um, you know, well, we'll see how that shakes.
Can I clarify? In a staffing sense, like part of his full-time equivalency F T E, we don't see that right now. But as far as taking on leadership responsibilities to impart the information, do the presentations, empower teachers to do what they need to do. Yes. Does that answer your question?
Okay, he just hasn't been able to do that, as you know. He's been busy.
I have a few questions on the nitty gritty. So in Mount Angel itself, if our socioeconomic status is like kids should be like a, what was it? A point three below grade level or whatever it is?
About grade level.
About grade level. So we're like right there. So we're looking for kids that don't fit that. I was just wondering how we identify, of course, I'm going to go to the E L L ones.
Yeah, I know, right?
Do it. I, you know, so I was just kind of wondering how, I guess, that's something we're figuring out, right? We don't have it totally dialed in, but it is something that we can work at.
Yeah, I think, you know, a huge asset that we now have on our team is Will Holman, who we hired as our E L D T O S A with household thirty four ninety nine dollars. He is, if you haven't worked with him yet, I know a couple of board members have been able to work with him, but his knowledge of data is absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal. He's already implemented E L D C F As at every school. I mean, right, three times.
What's it C F A?
Sorry, um, he has common formative assessments at for just, um, E L, E L. Um, in the four areas, he might not be having them in all four areas at every school, but he at least has them. I mean, already in just a year, even with the crazy years that we've had, he's already done that. Um, and he has been administering that like in the middle of all this, which by the way, we're still short in F T E this year. And he's still doing like all of this. So, yeah, so I think we have that to give us the data on who is, um, at least making, um, a higher rate of progress. Um, we also have, it's really clear which newcomers are, um, with their ALPS scores, like making, you know, again, I'm going to use the word just phenomenal growth versus like who's kind of plugging along. Um, but we also, I have, I think, three checklists that are really aimed at students who are linguistically diverse. So, I mean, those are just, you know, once we have some of these other pieces. And we have one newcomer who within a few months was already conversing in fluent English. Might want to pay attention to that one, you know, so she's in your school. So, um, it's, you know, she was just took right to it and we already know like, oh, this is the kid who is just taken off. So, um, if I feel like we added enough measures, which then when you combine with portfolio of evidence of like classroom-based, um, observations and then your classroom C F As, your classroom common, common formative assessments to support whatever area it is that we're looking at. It's better than what we had and we'll get better. We'll get better. I stole a lot of stuff from Hillsborough. It was like
Great. Why reinvent it?
They know, they know. Yeah, like they, they have like F T E dotted to tag and they are, you know, incredibly linguistically diverse. So.
I like your, no, I, I, the comment is I like your, um, how you put the newcomers in there because I think that's a piece that we don't, wouldn't ordinarily think about and putting into this bucket of tag.
Thank you.
It is something that I know it's, it's new to all. I mean,
Yeah.
But I do think it's a very valuable piece to look at because those could, those students could be easily overlooked.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, think of our kids who have disabilities, um, you know, which I have, obviously have a personal bias toward, um, but you know, we absolutely have kids who are twice exceptional, duly identified students. Um, and we can do a better job of figuring out who those kids are. And I know that we have the ability to do that. So that's one of the like beautiful things about being a small district is we all wear a lot of hats. And so I think we can do, do a good job of figuring that out.
So second grade gets tested in the fall?
They get tested in February. So parent permission goes out in January and then they get tested in February and will likely just do the same for sixth grade. It's just with, when you have to put the whole assessment schedule together, like buying for time. So, and it gets over with so quickly. It's not like a big chunk of time, but again, it's disruptive and you have to consider all the things, principles. At least I don't like you to interrupt, turning.
Yes, ma'am. Um, if you don't mind, just ask this question. I'm curious. The Nagli area, will we be using that with sixth grade as well?
Yes.
Then, and it's a different format entirely standardized based on the grade level that's taking, okay?
Yep. I'm, I'm just By a different form per aligned with the grade.
Do you have a, a sense from other tag coordinators in the state? How many pay attention to that? How many pay attention to that inclusiveness and are working on non-verbal assessments? And how many are still stuck in a more traditional way of testing that won't catch as many students? Does that question make sense? I'm just curious, you know, if we have other.
Um, are we ahead of the group of the? A lot of districts, well, oh, I can speak to, a lot of districts use a universal screener. Um, I, I would say the two main ones are either the COGAT or the NAGLIA.
Okay.
Um, since we don't have like dedicated FTE, um, the NAGLIA is great because it is computer based. And automatically, like, you get the scores right then. And we don't have anybody who can hand score, like, for, for those of you who've been in school districts, we can't hand score the Raven or the COGAT. I mean, it's, those are the two main ones.
Okay.
And, um, it's also very cost effective. Uh, we can assess the entire second grade for, I mean, depending on. I think it's seven or eight dollars a kid.
I just so appreciate that it's non-verbal, you know, so that it eliminates a barrier.
Right, so when I line up, really, there's three options, then we come down to, um. That one based on a variety of things, but the two, I mean, I think Sam Kyler sometimes still uses the Raven matrices. Um, but again, they have multiple tag. You would know.
Program associates and all of them.
Yeah, they have like a whole team, I'm like tech people. So does Woodburn, like Woodburn has tech people, so like, it's not really like a comparison. I can't hand score all of those. Just saying.
No, you can't.
Thank you. Um, I like, I love the reports that NAGLIA gives, it's a beautiful time to peek out on data. I could use state nine scores, which nobody else can appreciate. Anything else, guys? I'll invite you to my next.
As we move ahead, which I, I, first of all, this is just wonderful stuff and I, you know, it's really, really great.
Thank you.
Um, we're looking at. Weird comparison of tag kids that we have currently or is that increasing? Are we in the process of moving it forward or how's that look?
Yes, so Jeff at the middle school has a few students that he is. Yep, and Luke Schroder, uh, again, middle school has like three students as well. So that's like six students at the middle school.
Well, that's because they probably didn't get taught earlier.
Uh, yeah, I think there were a few students at like fifth grade that they were like waiting on. S back scores and it's like, well, shoot, we don't need S back scores, let's just move forward. So, yeah, so we, we do, um, and, um, yeah, so we're moving forward. And that, um, I mean, Nick and I feel comfortable with the process, so we're. We're ready to like lead people through and not be like, you gotta wait for that presentation. It's like, no, we're, we're ready to move forward if, if teachers aren't comfortable, so. You don't need to wait for my fabulous presentation, I'm just kidding. I'm better in front of kids than I am in front of grownups. Right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
We're session this year. Are you going to school?
Yeah, we're recording, okay, yeah.